Test, test one two. Test, testing, one two three.
Hello testing, testing? Test. Test, test. Testing, testing.
Testing one two three, testing one two three.
Yes. Testing.
Good.
Test, test. I don't hear you from Zoom. Can you say one more time? Yeah. I don't hear from Zoom. I hear from there but not from Zoom.
Testing one two three.
Yes, I can hear now. Test. 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 Test.
Good evening, everyone. So, we're back from closed session and now we have our city attorney. Would you like to make an announcement?
Thank you, mayor. There is nothing to report out.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, who would like to lead?
I'll do that.
Okay, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And so, it is my turn to do the invocation. I don't have something written down, but I'll just speak from the top of my head. And I'll speak from my heart. So, I want to thank all the community, all of Melpitas, for being, always having the city in their heart. It's called civil service, making sure that our city is safe. I want to thank all the fire department, all the other departments, the city, especially the police and the fire for keeping our citizens safe. And I want to thank all the citizens for being proactive and making sure that our city is safe and making sure that our city is beautiful. And also coming and respecting the city council for the decisions. We are honored to have been elected by the citizens to protect, to be fiscally responsible, to make sure that their city is kept safe, that our roads are kept clean and safe. And this is what a city, we should be doing for our city to make sure that we're providing all the good services for our city and making sure that we have beautiful parks, beautiful services for all our residents. Thank you for electing us. We are here to serve you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to presentations. So, we have some certificates that are available. So, everyone on to the floor. Thank you for being here tonight, this evening. So, tonight, we are proud to present the Neighborhood Beautification Awards, recognizing community members who take exceptional pride in maintaining and enhancing their properties. These awards celebrate residents, businesses, and organizations that contribute to the beauty and character of Melpitas. We extend our gratitude to everyone who helps our city a more, to make it a more welcoming and attractive place to live. So, on behalf of the Melpita City Council, congratulations to this year's recipients for their dedication and efforts in keeping Melpitas beautiful. So, we have a list of certificate recipients. So, I will have each council member, the vice mayor as well, to give out a certificate. I will... Can we give it to them? So, I will have... For the residential category, we have Jasmine Fernando. Jasmine, okay, there you go. And then, congratulations.
We should have... Do we have a picture of their thing? Of their front yard? Really beautiful.
Do you have a lead? A minute. Then, we have the picture. The picture of the house? Did anybody take it? Want me to put it on the screen?
I just want to say, it's truly beautiful. I don't know how she does it every year. It's right behind Wells Fargo. Come on. Jasmine, you can do it. Come on, come on. You're heavy. Thank you to the city of Melpitas. We are so proud to be a resident and part of the city. I really love our mayor and the vice mayor and the whole council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
William?
This is for... For where?
Is Mark here today?
Okay.
We'll give this to him.
Samantha? Samantha Copila? Not here.
No, this one, this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Saint Elizabeth Catholic Church.
Come on.
Well, I'd like to thank the city for having an award for things that are beautiful here in the city that we like and that we appreciate. As volunteers for our church, we have a lot of people that help keep it up and sustain it and keep it looking good. And we thank you for sharing your thoughts with us about how it looks. God bless to you all and thank you.
I don't know if they're building.
All right, the next beautiful one is Building Kids of Melpitas.
Are they here? Are they here?
Are they here?
Last one.
Oh, it's here.
Oh, building here. Oh, great. Wow. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words, please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much, city of Melpitas. Really very motivating and thank you for introducing this beautification award. This is keeping us going. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is Stephen Go here? If not, we'll give this to them. Thank you all so much. I wish we had the pictures because I know how beautiful they are. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, now, let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Please note that oral public comment may be... May only be provided live at the Melpita City Council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to three minutes. So, city clerk, would you call?
I have a speaker card from Voltaire Montemayor.
Welcome, Mr. Montemayor.
The mayor, vice mayor, members of the city council, assistant city manager and staff. Oh, two topics. I scribbled... Yeah, congratulations. I know very well, the brother nice of Polumbos, Greg DeSelle. I know the brothers here. And we hope... Greg DeSelle. I'm one of the brothers here. And we help cleaning up the church. I'm with the cleanup setup team at St. John's also. I'm not trying to cut stuff. Yes, the place that we clean, we call it Disneyland, but it's still on. Forgive me if I, I'm not praising it good luck. We try to improve the place Disneyland where the sheds are, but it still needs some improvement. And also the dirt parking by St. John. So we need some cleaning, the beautification. Another topic of mine is, I cannot, I appreciate the city making the streets really good to drive on. And I have experience, but I don't know because because of honesty, I think I'm charged of being at fault for my, yeah, for everybody. Even though you're a good driver, we cannot rely on the rear mirrors, side mirrors. But there's a blind side. So I didn't see the lady at my blind side. And it's the findings. Hopefully, I could, I don't want to challenge it. Hopefully, because of my honesty, I could still be not having a big insurance increase. So anyway, yeah, I didn't mention, sometimes I said it myself because I didn't even say it was raining that day. I thought it was, it stopped raining yesterday, but there were rains of and on. And then, yeah, I don't want the statement that I said to a lady that made me, the adjuster made me guilty. But I think because of honesty, I said it anyway. So anyway, sometimes it's really good to say something like, but for me though, I am for honesty, God and for myself to be good. So yeah, Melpitas is a good, the streets in Melpitas are good to drive. No excuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. And so now, moving on to announcements for conflict of interest, any campaign contributions from our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. I ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barba Dio?
None.
Councilmember Chua?
None.
Councilmember Lamb?
None.
Mayor Montano?
And I am none.
Thank you, mayor. I further ask the mayor and all the members of the PSA council to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the past 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development projects for development, sorry, development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barba Dio?
None.
Councilmember Chua?
None.
Councilmember Lamb?
None.
Mayor Montano?
None.
Let the record reflect no report conflicts. Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you very much. And now we're moving on to the code of conduct. I'm asking Councilmember Lamb if you would read the code of conduct.
Okay, Melpitas City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Model severity. Avoid surprises. Place publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the city dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliation related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speak with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administrations. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with the code of conduct.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lamb. And so now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes before we make a motion? We're seeing none. We have. Okay, so it was motion by Councilmember Chua. And is there a second? And we, it was seconded by vice mayor. Okay, so now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barba Dio?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you for that. And now moving on to the consent calendar.
Any staff have any comments on the consent calendar?
No comments on the consent calendar, mayor.
And now for the council, do you have any changes? Anyone?
To approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second? It was seconded, it was moved by Councilmember Chua, seconded by Councilmember Lamb. So now we'll call for the vote.
We need to call for public comment, mayor.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on this? Okay. Welcome. That one right there.
This is for any comments on the consent calendar items.
Well, I have a chance to talk about turns. Was that part of the public forum?
That was the public forum.
Okay.
That was the public forum.
You didn't really ask anybody out here.
So when, when I had asked for public forum, it was Mr. Montemayor came forward. But actually, if, I think we'll go ahead and allow it. We'll go ahead and allow it.
I came here to say this. So I'm Zach. I have concerns about Roundup being sprayed at our parks. One, being, why does Melpitas allow Brightview Landscaping to spray our parks with Roundup?
Can you speak closer to the mics, please? Thank you.
Why does Melpitas allow Brightview Landscaping to spray our parks with Roundup? Two, why are residents not being informed that it's being sprayed? Three, why aren't there notices at the park and, or why aren't there prior and post notices at the park of application? Four, why do they spray on windy days affecting residents at home and children in our schoolyards? Five, spring sports are just around the corner and I'll be coaching soccer. I don't want my kids to be handling a ball that's rolled into poison.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your comments. And we will let our public works department know that. Is that my phone right here? I'm sorry, did you say something? We have a.
We can ask someone from our public works team to follow up with them directly. Chief Hernandez, could you get Zach's contact information so we can have someone from public works follow up with him? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Now, moving on to, let's see, community services.
Sorry, mayor. Mayor, we're still on the consent calendar and need to take public comment on the consent calendar?
Public comment on the consent calendar. That's right.
I have no comment actually. That one motion, yeah, it includes the great one. So for me, all good. And the previous speaker, yeah, he said something that need to be like announced among the neighborhood. Oh, it's not me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment on the consent calendar? Okay. And now call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barba Dio?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you for that. So now moving on to, excuse me, to the community development, city manager.
Thank you, mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to introduce Director of Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives, Alex Andrade, to receive an update on the Melpitas Innovation District Branding Initiative and Logo Design Status. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and vice mayor and city council. Again, my name is Alex Andrade. It's been a while since the Office of Economic Development has been in front of you and the community as it relates to the Innovation District. So we're really excited about tonight's presentation. And we hope it's a fun exercise for you because Michael Thomas, our Economic Development Coordinator, will present various options for you to take a look at or proposed logos of the Innovation District. Also, we have a local consultant by the name of Navajo Company, and his name's Ross Martinez. So if there's any questions at the end, we will all happily respond to your questions. So I'm going to have Michael Thomas, our Economic Development Coordinator, come up and give you the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Andrade. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Michael Thomas, the Economic Development Coordinator here with the city. So here to give you the update on the Melpitas Innovation District Branding Initiative and Logo Design Status. Next slide, please. The Innovation District is a 74-acre area located within the Melpitas Metro-specific plans area. And it's indicated on this map in the teal, dark green shaded parcels where Montague Expressway and South Melpitas Boulevard converge, and also a few, a collection of parcels just south of the Great Mall. Innovation Districts are geographic areas that include a mix of small, medium-sized businesses and academic institutions operating in transit accessible and technologically wired area. Next slide, please. Per the Fiscal Benefits of Employment Lands Report, which you'll hear about shortly, the district's vision is to build a culture of creativity, innovation, inclusivity, equity, and agility to advance opportunities. And those opportunities are realized with the district being an employment destination with modern research and R and D buildings and flexible space for people to interact. Well-connected Innovation District has proximity to public transit, public infrastructure, and public-oriented spaces, as well as IT infrastructure and utilities to support a connected community. Next slide, please. The Fiscal Benefits of Employment Lands Study was a two-phase project with phase one being the study completed in October 2021, and phase two being the final report completed in June 2022. And phase one included, noted that Innovation Districts have value because they ensure the city's fiscal sustainability via diverse revenues, preserves and protects employment lands, stimulates the creation of this district, and hire paying employment users that are reflective of the highly educated and highly skilled labor force here in Melpitas, encourages creative placemaking, and strengthens connections with the transit center, and leverages the city's existing business ecosystem. In June 2022, the phase two report covered development potential and opportunity sites, case studies of other innovation districts such as Mission Bay, Perry Park, and Warm Springs, and the Innovation District Action Plan, which is 14 actions, with number 11 being the branding initiative. And those 14 actions are divided into three groups, first being incentivizing new development, funding and investing, and then city leadership outreach and partnerships, which is where the branding initiative is included. Next slide, please. The Innovation District Branding Initiative calls for strategic place branding that will allow the district to turn from a place into a brand, and then to retain a consultant to develop the Innovation District logo, tagline, and marketing and collateral materials, and also reach out to those target audiences that include residents, landowners, employers, and real estate investors and developers. Next slide, please. The Branding Initiative project scope began with a competitive RFP process that resulted in Melpita-based technology marketing firm Navajo Company being selected as the consultant in 2023. And that project scope includes a brand strategy, which we're involved with here, which the logo and tagline are, and brand name are associated with, as well as the dedicated website design and development, branded content articles, prospect welcome packet, pitch deck, and industry lead generation list, targeting the businesses that we want to focus on, such as biosciences, AI, auto tech, auto technology, and other advanced manufacturing industries. Next slide, please. So the name and tagline development comes from the brand core, which is the key part of the branding initiative. And the brand core is comprised of five elements: vision, mission, values, themes, and target audiences. With the mission, with the vision of the district being envisioned as a community, as a highly desirable employment destination for STEM professionals that is sustainable, easily accessible, and integrated with the surrounding environment. And then the mission being create, being able to create a flexible commercial real estate developments, supporting research and development, education, and other ancillary activities in the district. Next slide, please. So that brings us to name and tagline development. And you see it right there. Melpitas Innovation District, reimagining work, connection, and community. And the brand core is what influences what you see on the screen before you right now. And this was an iterative process that involved the consultant, economic development, the city manager's office, and the Economic Development and Trade Commission last year between May and September. This name is clear, simple, and easy to understand, and clearly defines Melpitas' brand. The brand name positions the district as the area's tech center, while the tagline references impactful innovation that makes life work better in this district. The tagline represents a people-focused approach because innovation districts today must account, must be designed for the humans that inhabit them. And audiences respond to people-focused branding, who've responded to people-focused branding, consider the needs of employees who work in the district. Next slide, please. So influences for the logo development, so are taken from the Melpitas community. First, you have the physical and nature environment captured by the east hills. Then you have the built environment and infrastructure and architectural features that you see in more recent development projects, such as the art station and development projects in and around the transit area. And special architectural features that you see in those buildings, for example, the curved roof line of the BART station. And so after they settled on the name and tagline between September and November of last year, the staff consultant and representatives from the city manager's office, recreation community services and public information, and the Economic Development Trade Commission considered iterations of the logo designs. Navajo provided first draft logo designs during this time period that included three logo marks and three letter marks, as well as fonts and color palettes. Now, a logo mark is like a symbol of a business. So examples of logo marks include, you know, Target, Pepsi, and Nike, while letter marks are the initials of a business. So think IBM, CNN, and NASA, for example. So the goal was to create a logo that is simple, timeless, modern, and, you know, represents accessible and is accessible, but also not complicated, because complicated designs can become outdated. Next slide, please. So before you hear, you see logo mark one. And it's described as, and it's a stylized M, as you see, it reflects metro connectivity, wayfinding, and upward momentum. The metro connectivity and wayfinding referencing the transit center, and then upward momentum reflecting innovation. This was among, this was the most preferred of the logos because it is clean, clear, and recognizable. And the stylized M shows balance and upward movement denoting growth and collaboration. And the logo, you know, it was appealing to see how it fit, it was appealing that it fit well with the name and tagline. Next slide, please. Logo mark number two is a unique sun rising over the hills representing newness and a new day, with the sun and hills representing Melpitas and newness and new day being innovation. But after review, this logo design was seen as too confusing, abstract, or unclear. Next slide, please. Logo mark three reflects connection, ideas coming together, yet different, but welcoming and recognizable. So kind of think of all the ingredients that you throw in to be creative, and then there's an explosion of innovation. But again, after reviewing, this logo was seen to be too confusing, abstract, and unclear. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here, for ease of reference, are the three logo marks that I just summarized, so they're here for ease of reference for you to look back and take a peek at. Okay, move on to slide 14. Now, you heard me mention letter marks earlier on. Again, letter marks are the initials of a brand, and here MID was used as the initials. But there wasn't a lot of collective support for this type of, these types of marks, because it was seen as just too many letters in the design. So they were removed from consideration, resulting in the three logo marks that you see here this evening, but included for your reference. Next slide, please. Also, part of the logo development process were identifying color palettes. The first palette in the upper half of the slide reflects contemporary colors used in the high-tech industry, and the other palette in the lower half are nature-based colors, similar to what you see in the city's branding mark. Next slide. Next steps. So we're here to receive city council direction on logo design, all by completing the branding deliverable, website design and development, the prospect welcome packet, pitch deck, lead generation outreach, branded content articles, and website launch. Next slide, please. So just recap here, the recommendation before you this evening is to receive the update on the Innovation District Branding Initiative and approved logo design option number one for final development by the consultant Navajo Company. That concludes my remarks, but I myself, Director Andrade, Mr. Martinez are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for that presentation. And now we'll call for a public comment on this presentation. Is anyone from the public that would like to speak on this?
Both, everyone, the mayor of Milpitas. Yeah, of course, I, Engineering Department, Public Works. Maybe the Fina, Finance Department will be later to be considered most. Now, on the structures, I believe we have a planning commission, so we go there, all those, SICA, all those. And because of, it's really the place showing the greatness of Milpitas, then all should be of, I believe, do we need a seismological equipments on the buildings to detect something? If there is a timber or some that called jolt? And yeah, as I was saying, I'm, I'm not questioning yet. There may be some developments about roads. I know I, I always go there that way. Is that the Montague down, London, London Street? But I know, are we good on the, the width or the widening of the roads there already? I believe Milpitas will encourage tourists doing this. The word innovation, MID, the word innovation is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there new else, anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item?
I have no additional public speaker cards, mayor.
None? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Anyone have any comments to say about the presentation, any ideas? Okay, we have council member Chua.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. On the tagline, I, I, reimagining work, connection, and community. To me, Innovation District is a place, a destination. So to me, it should be something like Innovation District, where ideas become realities. There's an action item, and there's an action word in it. It's a place. You want to entice people. Telling me it's a reimagining work, connection, and community doesn't, it doesn't ring a bell to me. That's my initial comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a, someone to ask a, I'm, I'm a little bit, I do like the first one, the one that staff recommends. However, it, it reminds me of the Atari, the Atari logo. That's the only thing. So, I mean, I, I like the, the concept that moving up, forward, wayfinding, upward momentum, but it's just like we're copycat, being copycats of, of the Atari logo or emblem.
Mayor Montana, would you like us to put the slides back up?
Yeah, would you please?
Sure.
Please let us know what slide number you're looking for.
Give me one sec. Slide number five, please. I'm sorry.
If you could put all of them up, that way we can, that way we can all discuss and look.
Thirteen has all three of them, side by side, by side. There you go.
There you go. Thank you.
I would like to ask Director Andrade if you or someone from the team would like to address the comments received so far, if that's okay with the mayor, if you have any feedback that you'd like to provide.
We, we will, yes. And I'm going to have Ross come and join us.
Or if the mayor would like to seek any other feedback from council members first, and then Ross, and can some, okay.
Please.
So respond to Councilmember Chua's comment first, is that?
Yeah, please respond to her.
So before Ross begins, thank you first and foremost for your comments. It is a place. It's a place in transition. It's a, it's an organism. It's in an ecosystem. It'll keep evolving. So part of the, that tagline has to do with the residents that live there. So what we're trying to do is, that area of the city has gone through an evolution. There's now residents that are living there where there used to be jobs, where there were industrial, it was an industrial area.
Imagining work, community, connection, and it's going to take us a long few minutes to explain this. I mean, we want a tagline that tells, tells it what it is.
Yes, and we're, we're trying to do that, but I, I couldn't have Ross give you.
Taglines are generally, they'll evolve over time. And right now, we're trying to attract developers to this Innovation District. It's not built yet. So we're trying to invite people in to reimagine what this space could be. So that's, that was a key reason why we used that word. We think reimagine can, you know, live on and be a part of your brand when people start moving in and start developing buildings. But right now, we're trying to be collaborative and invite people in to think about this space.
I've seen this reimagine word before. I think it was HP. I, I can't remember exactly which company, but, but, or Apple, I can't remember. But it has been used before.
Yes.
What I'm saying is, let's be original.
That is, thank you. Well, I have a tagline for you. Great ideas come from great minds, because it's innovation, you know? When someone is innovative, it's an idea. So there you go. Anyway.
Were there, were the other words confusing, work, connection, community, that we, that Alex was explaining, why we included those, or no?
Don't have to explain it. It's there. Here, you have to explain it, and that's no tagline to me.
Okay. Thank you. So thus far, we've heard, excuse me, Ross, we've heard Innovation District, where ideas become reality? Is that verbatim what you said? Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chua. And mayor, great ideas come from great minds. Thank you. Just confirming.
Is anyone, I think Vice Mayor has a comment.
Okay. So I'm visual, and I see the presentation, you know, with all the business. Can we put that 74-acre up the board? We can use Google Maps, so that we can visualize the Innovation District, what it is now.
There is a map, I think it's slide number two.
This one here? That one you're talking about?
Yeah, well, it's more vivid if you go Google Maps, so we can actually see the streets, what is there now, and stuff like that.
So you're asking for a, a Google aerial map?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I would suggest is if there's any, while, if, if, Michael, you could go check with IT in the back to see if they can put up a Google aerial, and in the meantime, if there's any, while they're doing that, if there's any additional questions or feedback.
Okay. Okay, so I, while we're doing that, because I, I see the presentation, right? It's a vibrant district with all the activities and buildings, so that's why I want to see where, where, you know, this tagline, this logo will be put, is it currently appropriate with what's going on there now? Is it not too early for, you know, to, to have a tagline, to have a logo, and what kind of development we have? That's exactly why I, you know, I want to see the, the actual aerial map. So here's the question. So this tagline, where are we going to use them? Are we going to use them in advertisements?
Yeah, exactly right. We have a pretty significant scope of work, and we, we can bring that slide back up, but I can have Ross talk about the scope of work, or Michael.
The aerials, oh, it's almost up on behind us.
Yeah, there you go. So we can orient you here, Vice Mayor. So the majority of the Innovations District 74 acres are part of Montague Expressway. So if you look at Montague Expressway, where it meets Highway 680, that would be the east side. So heading westbound toward East Capitol Avenue and Great Mall Parkway, it would encompass that entire area toward the Transit Center, and then work its way just north through the Great Mall Parkway, past the Stratford School there on the corner, and the next few parcels toward what would be, I think, at the, at the intersection of McCandless and Great Mall Parkway, kind of a hockey stick view.
If we put a percentage on that, what percentage would be commercial? What percentage, I, I see a lot of residential. So I, what I'm, my, my pointing out is, you know, the tagline, the logo is appropriate to that area. So how much of this 74-acre consists in percentage would consist the, the idea that we're trying to, you know, to, to promote, project with these taglines and, and logo, logos? Which part?
If I had a cursor, I would be able to walk you through it.
Yeah.
Yes, so on the right-hand side of the, of the screen, where you see those large buildings, yes, around that area right there, Pecton Court, that encompasses a portion of the Innovation District. Across the street, where that's the Montague Business Center.
There's a storage, right?
Yeah, you have the storage areas there, public storage, and then you, if you head west, past the creek, then you start getting toward South Milpitas Boulevard, and yes, that encompasses that entire area there, including the Transit Center and the surface parking lot, to the corner, and then now up past Stratford School, up Great Mall Parkway, including those parcels there from Chevron down to the Stratford School. That's the 74 areas, 74 acres of the 510-acre Milpitas-specific, Milpitas Metro-specific.
On the north side of Great Mall Parkway, not, right?
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Oh, yeah, so it's part of the Milpitas Metro-specific plan?
Correct.
It's inside it?
Yes, it is. It's one of the five districts within the Milpitas Metro-specific plan area.
All right, assuming that we, you, we find a logo, is this, are we going to put it up? Are we going to cost them a building? How, how, what, what's the idea?
Yeah, I'm going to hand it to Ross.
Right now, it'll go on the website and any marketing materials of the Innovation District. Eventually, when physical buildings are built, the, it could start to be a place-making, you know, location-making sign. You could, you could do signage, but right now, that's not the plan. It might evolve over time. If, if a developer comes in and has a different vision, sometimes the signage might evolve.
So it'll include website, articles, we want to get the name out, but one of the main components of the Branding Initiative is developing what's known as a lead generation list. That would be a list of businesses that are located, or rather, part of those three business sectors that Michael was referencing earlier, artificial intelligence, automotive technology, and biosciences. So this is a business attraction effort. So in order to reach out to property owners, developers, investors, we need essentially a pitch deck. So this is why we're here in front of you to talk about the logo and the taglines, because we're going to, we're trying to proceed with aggressive business attraction efforts. So it could lead, Vice Mayor, to what you're describing in more, in a more physical sense, where there's some sort of a monument sign that lets people know and businesses know you've arrived into the Innovation District. That's something that we'd like to see in the future.
So you're just defining now that district through branding and?
Precisely, yeah. We're very much at the nascent stages of trying to create the Innovation District.
Why can't we do it side by side? Talk to these businesses, hey, we're calling this this, this is our idea, our idea, and involve them, because, you know, for example, Bart wouldn't like, let's say, wouldn't work, what, wouldn't be, let's say, wouldn't, not like, wouldn't agree with, you know, the, the concept that we have. Aren't we supposed to talk to these businesses now? Or, or we'll just shove it to them later on?
When you go into this area now, there are viable businesses located there, but those property products are, are pretty old and tired. So we need to create energy and synergy where investors, businesses, anchor tenants, maybe academia can come in and invest. We're talking about significant amount of money.
And we still have spaces.
Well, I think that's one of many challenges that we have before us, which is the city does not own any land within the area. So one of the things that happened was the Metro-specific plan, so now it's a specific plan. And then most recently, it was, that area was rezoned to Business Park Research and Development in June, June 18 of 2024. So rezoning can create value for the property. So part of this Branding Initiative is helping us get the information that we want and need to get people excited about coming and being part of this Innovation District, whether it's a business, academia, investors. This is just part of a, of a long process.
I can add something?
Yeah, sure.
You need to have a brand to promote before you can start promoting opportunities, too. So that's where the, the brand would be that hook to get people interested. And the business attraction is also action item 13 in the Innovation District Action Plan, for reference.
And that was approved in 2022 by the city council. This is one of the 14 action items.
And, and one more, I know that we have engaged Navajo already, right? Wouldn't be something to think about? How about let's present it to the students? Hey, make a contest. We will give them prices on a developing, a theme, a logo, that, that, you know, that just like what we're trying to, to develop now.
We have been in front of the Economic Development and Trade Commission multiple times. There is a youth commissioner that's on the commission, and that student has provided us some feedback. If the city council would like us to do a, a community workshop, or go out to the Milpitas Unified School District, to the E-Tech program, for example, those are things we can do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so if, you know, it's local bread, you know, visions and from, from our children, from the community, maybe it's something that would help us create that branding.
We can, we can do that. We'll have to have a conversation with our consultant about scope of work and schedule and cost as well.
Guided by our very able consultant, maybe, you know, and, and local produce, those talents probably would be more, you know, something as, as, Councilman Chua was saying, something that is very personal, something that, hey, if you're from Milpitas- something that, hey, if you're from Milpitas, you know that this is what it means. And then you, you know, people and branding, they share it to, you know, to any business or outside. Then it starts with the base, I think that's the idea.
Yeah, I think that's really important, as you indicated, that Milpitas residents know this place.
Right.
But we're going beyond that. What economic development is attempting to do is, is go beyond this Silicon Valley region, national, global, in order to create interest and invest in here.
No, I understand. All I'm saying is we're starting from a grassroots that will go international. Not we're aiming for international, that even our grassroots, probably hard to discern what we're talking about. So from grassroots all the way up, instead of up, trying to disseminate it to the grassroots. Just an idea, you know, we're trying to brainstorm this. As I said, we have very able, I believe, a very able marketing consultant, you know, put an ingredient with local talents, and maybe we could probably develop something, something more effective. I'm not saying things are not effective now, but something that is, you know, by hard people know, and then we'll just spread it out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Vice Mayor, are you saying that, excuse me, are you saying that we should start all over again? And go to the community and get their feedback? Because I'm thinking dollars, we have to pay him, the consultant. So to me, that should have been done in the beginning, but we're already in this place and time.
I am mindful that.
Oh, wait, hold on.
That we have to teach, when things. Have more idea, implement that local talent. You know, just like a workshop with locals. And so that, you know, we hit two birds on one stone. We already have a contract from the consultant, just an extra step, like what we're doing now, right? You're showing us some finished products of the project, and each of us have, you know, have comments. So those comments, you know, as we are taking notes of it, it will be incorporated on the final one that's going to presented. All I'm just saying is just take an extra step, show it to the children, show it to the community. If they say it's good, or hey, make it multi-color, or make it round, or some, just something that the community may have an input with. And, and, you know, hopefully we'll have a greater product. Right.
Conversations with our City Manager's Office and Economic Development and the Trade Commission as well.
And their feedback, and it's a nice commission with a variety of students to business owners.
Right.
I'll just say that Navajo Company is a local business. I grew up here, so we definitely have a local feel. We understand this place. I drive up and down the Montague Expressway, so you have local people on this.
Local Milpitas business, right?
Milpitas-based business, yes.
That's why I praise it on the first hand. Our very talented consultant, working with our very gifted constituents, community.
Well, that sounds good. We will do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chua?
I agree with Vice Mayor about reaching out. Please reach out, maybe narrow it down to high schoolers, because we have several high schools here. You know, even the Christian School, the St. John, MUSD, and Stratford, they're very talented. And I sat on the Arts Commission, and you should see the talents. Actually, Assistant Director is here, Tegan, and they're very, very talented. And can imagine what they can come up with. Because give them a chance, you know, then make a, make a contest or challenge them. And, and they're going, if they, if this goes out to the community, they're going to be the first marketeers for your Innovation District. You know? They will know what it is. And it's easier to, to market by word of mouth, person to person. So that's my take.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you. Councilmember Chua, now we have Councilmember Lam.
Yeah, I just want to make comment on the logo.
Can we get those logos back up on the screen, please? I think it was slide 13, please? I think it'll help you, Councilmember Lam.
Yeah.
Thank you.
By just looking at the first grants of the logos, obviously, logo mark number one is a little bit better than two and three. But I agree with the mayor. When I first saw that logo mark number one, that gave me the, yeah, gave me the impression of Atari. And, you know, we don't want to be copycat, we, you know, we need to come up with something original.
Thank you for those comments. I do agree too, and plus, it might be, we might get challenged on that, you know, from the, from the, from the, the, what do you call it, the intellectual property? Yeah, yeah, so for me, I, you know, I like, I like logo number three. Yeah, you're right, see? Can you, can you show, lift it up?
Yes, it is very similar, yes.
Yeah.
Let's do Xbox.
So.
There's a reason behind that, though, in terms of the transit and the connection.
And it's actually forming a, a building kind of silhouette. And so, yeah.
Would you, Mayor Montano, thank you for indicating that.
Yeah.
At least, number three is something you'd like. Is there, are we getting to a point where we're just going to start over? Or are you interested in improving what you have in front of you? Improving, okay, thank you.
Improve the logo as well, and also the tagline?
Okay. So the tagline, the logo, we will, we will improve based on your comments. We will go out to the community, especially youth students and the Arts Commission as well.
For me, I like three, because it does, well, but then again, those are the only three options I have. I mean, I would like more options. And the, and the tagline, I do agree that it's too wordy, reimagining work, or it's just too wordy. It has to be simple, to the point, you know, just like I said, great ideas come from great minds. Oh, the other question I want to ask is, what size is this going to be?
We have not determined the size. It could be any size, yes. Right now, it's, it's more about the, the articles, website, the pitch deck.
Digital communications.
Yeah, digital communications, exactly. But eventually, we will be looking at, hopefully, monument signs and other things, building signs, things of that nature. Yeah.
You can, it seems like the consul is saying, you know, come back and bring us, bring us something different.
Okay.
Something with more, we have a, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. On another subject, this attachment B, Innovation District Branding, what is this? Are you asking for funding on this, or are you working on it? Or what's the story on this one?
That is just to show you the funds that have already been allocated to this project. They were acquired as part of the fiscal year 2223 budget process. They are encumbered. There are not new funds, there are not a request for new funds, they're existing encumbered funds. And those are the existing deliverables for this project.
Have anything? 23, you said, have we delivered anything?
Yes. Some of the things that have been completed are. So we've, we have completed, so we're nearing completion of the, devout, the logo development. Some of the website development has begun, and some of the lead generation resourcing has begun.
Which one? Which one of these one, two, three, four, five, six items? Which one has been completed or delivered?
None of them completed, some are in progress, and some haven't been started yet. The rest would be completed after we get that logo design, name and tagline solidified and finalized, because that's where the branding starts, that's the foundation of it.
Okay. Because there's one here, item number three, says creation of a welcome packet for prospective investors. And we have a similar initiative from the mayor to do similar stuff for, for, for the coming of the, yeah, for tourism, especially specifically the FIFA and the 49ers thing.
Well, from what I know about that, that tourism promotion is a tri-fold that the Public Information Office is working on. And as for Super Bowl and FIFA, that is a separate endeavor that is in the national stages. Now, the pitch deck in that deliverable list, that will be target audience specific for developers, real estate investors, employers, landowners and residents. And we have those stakeholder engagement sessions.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, any other comments? Okay, so I guess you guys know what you're going to do, you're going to come back.
Thank you very much, City Council. Appreciate your comments.
Mayor, you do still need public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay, public comment on this item. Anyone from the public that would like to make any comments?
I hope I could imagine all, like, the tagline and logo. So it's going to be great. I'm still learning about it, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So now, since we decided, now, City Attorney, do we need to, since we decided not to approve, take a vote on this?
You're not obligated to call the question. If you merely want to provide feedback, then that is all that you need to do tonight. If there is no request by any member of the council to call the question, then staff would simply bring this item back based on the feedback given.
And I think Director O'Grady indicated that he, we've heard the feedback and so.
Thank you very much, okay. So now, moving on to Community Services and Sustainable Infrastructure, City Manager.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Recreation Community Services Director Renee Lorenson, and to approve the design for the Historical Marker Project and provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Renee Lorenson, Director of Recreation Community Services. We are excited to bring to you tonight a presentation on the design for our Historical Park Marker Project, which is a joint effort between the Arts Commission and the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Commission. Tonight, to make the presentation to you in person, is Assistant Director Tegan McLean, and I will hand it over to her.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, and my fellow colleagues. I'm very excited to be here tonight to present to you a design for the Historical Park Marker Project. Next slide, please. As a little bit of background, the City Council tasked the Arts and Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Commissions to collaborate on a historical park marker that could be placed in parks named after people or cultural groups. And those two commissions have been working on this for quite some time. Milpitas has 20 parks currently that are named for individuals or cultural groups. And the two commissions appointed a subcommittee that developed a concept, budget and recommendation for the first phase of parks that the city could install these historical park markers in. We came to City Council in September of 2023 to present the concept and the idea that this first phase would be funded mostly through the Public Art Fund, with future phases to be funded through grants or sponsorships. Next slide, please. So the concept that City Council has already approved was that we would come back to you with an artist-designed kiosk structure that would be recognizable and unique to Milpitas. We are looking for something that does not exceed seven feet in height, and it would be designed to be affixed into existing or poured cement pads in the park. The kiosk would contain full-color interpretive panels that would include biographical information about and a photo or drawing of the park's namesake, and that's the, the main point of this art project. But we would also include on the kiosks artwork by community members, possibly to be selected through an art contest with divisions by age group. And that artwork would be another mandatory piece of this marker. Depending on the content that we have available on each person who the park is named after, there may be room for other interpretive material as space permits. Next slide, please. So the Phase One parks that have been approved already by City Council are Bob McGuire, Frederick Creighton, Delano Manongs, Peter Gill, Jose Higera Adobe, and Murphy Park, and the Sunny Hills Albert Augustine Jr. Memorial Park. The budget for this project was, is $100,000. And that splits up with $30,000 as the general design budget for the artist, and then $10,000 for fabrication and installation of each marker. We originally asked you for $90,000, because we were originally going to do six parks. And City Council was very interested in seeing a marker in Delano Manongs, and that park was still in development, so that has been added. And the conversation we had with you in September of 23 was that $10,000 for that park's marker would come from the remainder of the park development budget, and that's available for us to use. Next slide, please. So as part of the public art process, we issued a call for artists in January of 2024. 14 artists submitted proposals, and the Subcommittee elected to review four designs. They used the public art selection criteria, which I'll go over in a minute. And their unanimous choice was Vicky Jo Soul's Natives proposal. That was then taken to the two commissions in a joint meeting, and the two commissions also unanimously voted to recommend the Subcommittee's choice to you. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the public art selection criteria that the Selection Committee used and the two commissions used is, you know, is this artwork appropriate for its surroundings? Is it appropriate to be in a park? Does the artist have appropriate experience to successfully complete the piece? So they looked at the artist's background and other work that they've done. Is the artwork original? Do we consider it to be of a high-quality design? And do we consider it to be of high-quality durable materials? And then finally, is the artwork content suitable for and appealing to this community? And the Selection Committee and the two commissions all agreed that this design we're presenting to you tonight meets all of those criteria. Next slide, please. So the design that I'd like to present to you is by artist Vicky Jo Soul, and it's called Natives. Next slide, please. Vicky Jo Soul is an Emeryville-based artist. She has 24 public art commissions to her credits, including one in Milpitas. You'll recognize that one in the lower right-hand corner. That's the Legends of Milpitas, the totem of Milpitas, in Murphy Park. She also has work in Emeryville, Oakland, Fremont, Mountain View, Livermore, Dublin, Richmond, Atherton, Brentwood, Stockton, and Reno, Nevada. And she's had numerous art exhibits, and her experience is primarily in functional art. So she's very well-versed in putting art that's in parks. You can see some of her other examples of work. She specializes in metalwork, and what she's proposed for us is a three-panel structure in Corten steel, which is very sturdy and often used for outdoor artwork, and it would be waterjet cutouts. Next slide, please. So the Native Designs proposal consists of these tri-fold screens that are flora and fauna native to Milpitas. So for example, live oak, sycamore, bees, the monarch butterfly, and the Anis hummingbird. And the panels themselves would be 72 by 35 inches and upstanding on eight-inch legs. They would be a waterjet-cut steel panel and coated with prismatic powder coating, and the powder coating makes them very durable when they're outdoors. They would have. They would have in those rectangular spaces Swansea outdoor lockable display cases, which are a standard over-the-counter type of a case. And so that makes them easy to replace if they get damaged or anything needs to be changed. The screens themselves are indicated to have an indefinite lifespan. It's easy to replace the individual parts. So if, you know, one of the three panels gets damaged, we could add another one. The cutouts discourage graffiti. You may be aware that, you know, a solid blank canvas is attractive to graffiti artists. So by putting the cutouts in the panel, it really cuts down on the temptation to put graffiti on there. And the artist did not give us a recommendation yet on panel printing. We are able to, you know, once we determine what we want to print on the panels, go back to her and work with her on that. Next slide, please. So the recommended design manufacturing time is about 22 weeks from the time this is approved by City Council to the time that we're ready to install in the parks. As I said earlier, our total budget is $100,000. She does require $50,000 upfront and that's because, you know, purchasing materials and artists are often not able to spot city municipal clients with the money. Her own fee would be $24,000. The waterjet cutting fee is $18,000, the powder coating is $14,000, and then the installation, $10,000. And we would prefer fresh concrete, but there are some parks that already have nice concrete available in them. You can see the artwork here superimposed at Jose Higera Park, kind of near where the cactus is. That's not necessarily where it has to go, but that was a recommendation as a potential spot for it. Next slide, please. So the recommendation is to approve the design for the historical park markers by Vicky Jo Soul and to transfer $10,000 from, actually, from the Delano Manongs Park budget to the public art program budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the artwork design.
Thank you very much for that presentation and clarification. So is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments on this item?
Great presentation. Yeah, I hope they're, I'm not putting any negative, but they're all rigid or stable as we stand there, right? So there should be no problem on the stones and rainy weathers. Yeah, this will defeat the, the problem of, instead of graffiti, is beautification. And I think we do what we can to have this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? From the public? Any cards?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, great. Now I'm moving back with the council to ask for any of your comments. We have Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah, how many of those are you gonna make? Is that seven? I see seven parts.
Tegan, yeah, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Lamb, there would be seven in this first phase and the intention that council originally had was that eventually we would get through all 20 of the named parks, but right now, we're talking about seven.
Okay. And then each one costs how much?
They cost roughly $10,000 to manufacture a, a single park's marker. So the project itself is $100,000.
So I'd like to piggyback on your question. So that's just for the product, but how much does it cost for the labor, for the artist?
So the artist's portion, she said $24,000 for herself and her portion breaks down a little bit differently than the $100,000 and the $30,000. That was what we originally offered to the artists with the budget that she provided. She's asking for $24,000 for herself and then money for the water jetting, for purchasing the steel and then for the installation of the pieces.
So the total?
The total is $100,000 for seven parks.
Just clarify, that includes the artist's fee?
That includes the artist's fee, yes.
All-inclusive is $100,000.
It's all-inclusive.
So you said $100,000?
Yes, correct. And I should note that the artist's fee includes her giving us the plans to create these markers so that we can, whenever we choose, add new markers at other parks, paying only the manufacturing fee for those.
Member Lamb, are you done?
Yeah, one more comment. Is the material resist of paint? As someone has mentioned, someone may do graffiti on it. So if, is it easy to clean if someone?
Yes, powder-coated steel is easy to, easy to clean and commonly used for public art for that reason.
So even people spray paint on it and is it easy to clean up?
It should be easy to clean. It's the same sort of material that's on signs and benches and stuff designed to be cleaned when it's used in a park.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Is there anyone else? We have a Vice Mayor.
So we, we currently have the signage in each park, those with posts and like, yeah, the name. Are we going to replace that?
This is not intended to replace the namesake or the names of the parks. This is intended to provide educational material for folks who would like to learn more about who the park is named after.
Oh, okay. So part of, this will have history, something like that?
Yes, it will have historical information about the park namesakes and the thought was that we would have a network of these similar markers in each park. So whenever you're in a park and you see one of these markers, you will know that it will have information about the park's namesake and community artwork in those window boxes.
Okay. Well, I admire how the project evolves. In September, I was checking, September 19, 2023 council meeting, it did define seven parks and, you know, from that time all to now, I think the involvement of PR CRC, which was a liaison way, way back at that, and a contribution of, I think, at least two members of the historical, right, Milpitas Historical and, and the way that, you know, there's what, about seven artists who, who tried to, I, I forgot, I read it somewhere. And then they choose this particular artist for her reputation, if it's a her, and her work and everything. I think, you know, with that kind of, of a process, I'm trusting that, you know, this project funded way back will, will be duplicated on the next 13 parks in Milpitas. I'm, I'm fine. So it doesn't replace the signage and the budget that we have, materials are included. Right. It's a package.
Everything is included.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman, we have Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Assistant Director Tegan because I was on the Arts Commission when this went through and I know two representatives from the Arts Commission was also a member of, of that. So I commend the Parks and Recs Arts Commission and whoever else and the staff for making this happen and I, and we met the artist and she is, this is gonna be a good additions, addition to the, to our parks. And also, one thing that's really very good is, this is coming out, coming out of the arts fund, not from the general fund. So thank you so much and please thank the commissioners for me.
I will definitely do that. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. And now we have Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah. My question is, on this artwork is, are you guys planning to have the same color for each part? Same exactly or for each part, it will be different color?
We have the option. The artist has given us the palette that's available and there are quite a few colors available for us to choose. The benefits of having the same color in each park would be that it would be very recognizable and people would know when they saw that screen to, you know, that, that's what that is. They would see it from a distance. However, if council or the community recommended, it's certainly possible to have them in multiple colors.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. Any more questions? I have a couple of clarifications, actually, comments. So this historical park marker, so it's going, this is the one that's designated, it's chosen for all the six parks eventually?
Correct. It's being recommended to you for placement in any park that's named after a person or a group of people. And for right now, there are seven parks in your first Phase One, but the intention is that when the city is ready, it could install these markers in the other 13 parks that are named after someone.
That's, that will be very, very expensive. I mean, just already $600,000 for six parks, $700,000 for seven, estimating, right?
Perhaps I've not explained it well enough. The $100,000 covers all of the first seven. It's not $100 or $100,000 per marker. It is inclusive of the seven. So you could figure, you know, there will be inflation next time we go to install these, but, you know, if, if we were to do it today, all 20 of them, it would, you know, be in the neighborhood of $230,000 today to do all of them.
Okay, thanks. I thought it was, there were gonna be $100,000 each.
That would be scary.
That's what I was thinking. Are you guys serious about this? Okay, so it's about $35,000 per marker. But where, where is it? Is there anything written? I don't see anything written etched in there. You're just gonna show the same thing of the, the?
So she has three different designs of the waterjet cuttings, but what makes them different is what goes in those shadow box areas because the one at Murphy would have information about Mr. Murphy, the one at Higera would have information about Jose Higera.
So the shadow box is that empty?
It's that blank square that you're looking at and those would also have artwork from the community. So there are four because it's a double-sided project. So you could see four different panels and?
But I still don't understand, but how, if, if, if that shadow area that you're talking about, if you're, is, how, what kind of information are you gonna put in there about the historical, the naming of the park? And plus, you know, how long is it gonna stay on there? Because you're mentioning other people can put, you know, art, school art on there. So I'm, we're not fair on that.
So it would be biographical information about the person developed in partnership with the Milpitas Historical Society since they are easily able to find for us old photographs and lots of details about some of these park namesakes. And then the community artwork, the intention would be that we would choose the community artwork. We wouldn't keep choosing it over and over again, but for example, if we were working on Murphy, the community around Murphy might be invited, maybe it's a wider call, but the community would submit art and then there would be some sort of an art contest to decide whose art would be on the final product.
Okay, but the information of the biographical information about who the park is named after, is that gonna be permanent?
Yes.
So that will be etched in one panel and then, because I saw two panels, two of those shadow boxes. So I'm still?
There's, there's two boxes in the direction that you're looking at, but if you were to walk around and look at it from the backside, you would see two more panels. So there's a total of four panels per piece and?
And so there will be information that will be permanent on one side and then the other side will be clear for community input?
It's clear on both sides with the information behind it. So it is intended to stay in there permanently? The children, if we did children's artwork or a community member's artwork, you could change it out, but we wouldn't want to do that a lot because you're printing it at a, a cost.
So it's intended to have the biographical information? It's not, when you say intended, that means it's not permanent?
My mistake then, poor wording on my part, but the biographical information is not going to change because the people's biographies don't change.
Right. So it's gonna be etched in there, some of it cannot be removed?
Can I just, so it's taken, it is intended to not be changed, but it's not gonna be etched in, right?
Correct. It's not etched, it's printed.
So we could change it in and out if?
I guess, yes.
If the information changed or?
If something changed about the information about the person that the park was named after, yes, in theory, you could change it.
So it'll be permanently printed? For example, you know how when you go to different parks like Galamarock Park and it has the trails and it has about the different species? Is it something like that?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's laminated. It's laminated. Okay. Okay. That's good. That's good to know. Okay. Yeah, that's, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
One, one more thing before you leave. So, and maybe this is not the time to bring it up, but, you know, a, a lot of our parks, well, for example, a lot of our parks that have already art on them, they're not being maintained and that's, I think, that's, and, you know, it costs money to maintain it. So I really think that the, I'm hopeful that, that we start focusing on maintaining those. If you've been to the Alvisa Adobe and you see beautiful art, I remember when I was on the council at the time, when they put that structure in, it was beautiful. Now it's deteriorating and I think we need to start thinking about maintaining those. And I think we even have a contract, we have contracts with the artists that they, that they need to be maintained. So if you can start looking into that. And then also the six parks that, how do you prioritize which one gets, which park gets this first?
I think the seven parks will all be done in fairly short order together so that we have an economy of savings when they're manufacturing the pieces. So?
Okay, great. Because some parks don't have anything on there and I know that you mentioned Higera Adobe, that that was the recommended, recommended site by the commission. However, there already is an art piece there at, at the Higera Adobe, right in the front. But, you know, I'd like to see other parks that are not represented, that don't have any, any type of art structure there to be considered as well. So, okay, that's it.
As I was saying on that last, we can look into that in the next phase of?
Yes, exactly.
Parks. Which ones needed the most?
To maintain those, those beautiful art pieces that are in our parks, they're not, especially the one in Alvisa Adobe. If, if you've been there, it's looking pretty, pretty bad. So hopefully we can get those fixed.
Thank you for those comments.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. And we've already done the council discussion, we've done public comment. So now we're going to go for a motion and a second. We have Councilmember Chua.
Motion to approve as stated on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
And it has been seconded by?
I would like to confirm that this is, that this is transferring the $10,000 from the Delano Manongs.
Yes.
Okay, so let's call for the vote.
Could you repeat the, the second for me?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Barba Dyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you. And now? Now we'll move on to announcements. Now we'll move on to announcements and any, any future agenda items.
Send no announcements from the City Manager's Office at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any council members have any announcements, requests? Okay. All right, well, everybody, oh, we have one. Councilmember, Councilmember Lamb?
Yeah, on the Milpitas City Council Corps of Conduct, there's one line, it says refrain from using electronic device while on the CD dial. I'd like to add one word to it. Refrain from using electronic device. Refrain from using electronic device inappropriately while on the council dials.
Inappropriately?
Yeah.
What would inappropriately be?
And Council, I believe that would be part of a council handbook discussion?
It's something to discuss.
Yeah, we'll bring that up with the city management, and then we'll go from there, the next one. And then he'll give us some advice on that, and the city manager. Okay, with that, meeting, oh, we have another one. Okay. Okay.
One liner.
Hold on a minute.
Takes 15 minutes.
Look, it's only nine o'clock, so we still got time.
You heard the mayor. I just want an update on the signage for the Milpitas Library as to a timeline, and where are we on that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know that I've signed the contract with the installer of Public Works Process, that contract, and it was sometime in the past few weeks, I remember signing it. And so I anticipate that it will be done in the next few months, but I will work with Public Works to get a schedule for that, and we'll email the Mayor and City Council within the week on the schedule for that.
All right, yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. And we have Councilmember Chua, the one that, it's still early.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to invite everybody, this Saturday, the Energy and Sustainability Commission is having a movie, movie, movie day. So they're going to show a lot of movies, I think, three or four, for the students at the library. It's about climate change. So that would be good.
And when is that, March?
Saturday. This Saturday. Please come. Please come and invite everybody as well. I don't know yet. There's a flyer. Can you please?
Yes, we will send that around to council tomorrow. Yeah, we'll send it to everybody tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. And I thought you were the last one, but you just reminded me. So this is Caesar Chavez's birthday is March 31st, and we have a city holiday, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I just want to wish everybody happy Caesar Chavez, and thank goodness that we, the city has a holiday. I'm named after him. Yeah, okay. Everyone, have a good evening.
I'm emailing myself the announcements, so I can follow up on them tomorrow morning before I forget.
Has an announcement? Did you have any announcements, chief, for us? Okay, all right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.